Okay, I'll go to my next.
Oh.
Did I have it locked?
Oh.
We can look down on the office.
I guess she's here.
You take back of the door and come for me.
All right.
We're just gonna come from here.
Hey Ryan, we're going to go up the lights out. We want to do the. Okay, I have a, if you're not going.
We're being.
Oh my God. And how many do you have?
Something we've been waiting.
This is summer and I think.
Like. Turn the little. T-shirt.
Yeah. Very long. Maybe three.
Not really, just break is. Good to break for now. I don't plan to get too far. You never know anyways what's gonna happen.
He was associated.
Social change you do so many times. I know where to go.
You're beating.
I didn't come to. I should get, I should get one of these. You have one in your shower?
I can. He can.
Have you gone on a roll?
Yeah.
I, I, I could come in and announce yourself. We throw it out. At least we can tell them.
You know, I'm gonna, we're just gonna be. Hold your truck hostage.
Mm-hmm.
But, but, but that's. If I'm running out of your trucks, kid. Your trucks. Don't worry.
Well, I don't like. Yeah, I mean, oh, we're trying to come alive as hell.
Yeah, but I don't think you're supposed to.
Not if I knew you was there. If you try to come in and I go for you there.
Like he's. He did it.
Yeah. That's great. Okay, you can't walk.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That's your, since we're live, we're supposed to be live. You're, you're supposed to have something to say.
I'm making a mark. Five, eight of them.
Tell me who's on.
Right.
I'm sure he's gonna say. Come on.
Okay. I'm sure that's hard. I mean, I have a.
Don't keep working.
And.
Yeah. Oh my God.
Yeah. Yeah. We got. So.
That's fair. Did you understand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Or anything.
Oh.
Or thirty-five.
It would be good. That is. Actually. Yeah. And you. You know, it's very. You know, I'm. Yeah. Is it this hour? You're. You know. Sure. I mean. Oh, I like it. Mm-hmm. I don't know. Actually. I don't think it's the same. I don't know.
Oh, would you try?
I guess. I don't know. I mean, this is a lot. I make a throw. County move. I prefer. This is. He has. Another time. Superdated. Because they didn't, they didn't say. I brought everything. And. They didn't really screw up. I think. He's every. I think we didn't.
And.
I'm proud. I'm very proud.
Okay.
Oh, I know. Do you come over? They want to hear me do.
Um.
I agree.
You guys don't.
I'm just. They want. We can't really do it. Yeah. I'm busy. I don't think I can help. You were just. Hospital.
Hospital. Isn't it?
We won't.
Yeah.
This is their.
I follow.
Or.
Um.
Yeah.
Actually. We. I follow. You know.
Yeah, sure. People.
Well, they use. Both. They develop all the time. And we're just discussing. So.
Like.
My help is fresh. That's why. They're totally. They're happy. And if they give it that way, correct. And I got cars and drugs. I thought they would just. I just want to see the local. We're. My heart's. It will be. I think. There's a.
There's that.
Okay. Remember. Or. Or greater. Wow. I can't believe.
That was.
Yeah.
Oh.
He. Yeah. First.
Yeah. Didn't get around there. There.
I don't want. Yeah. There.
I'm sure.
Oh, okay. Damn. There. It's not really that bad. It's a big deal. I'm also playing dirty. It's part of the group. Yeah. That's amazing for. You could hear. That's like I'm going. Yeah. I think that it's. Here. The whole thing is getting called off. We just. We don't start. Please.
They definitely. They definitely believe. I could go.
They have their. I can't. So. Yeah. About having. So. I don't hate.
No.
Yeah. Oh. Okay. They're probably. Yeah, they have. We drove down from the farm. It's like. My doors went down last year. We couldn't even. I always. So. The group is.
We need. If you do this. Roll.
I guess. What do you do?
Is that. First. Well, what did it take? Sitting. Those. I'm like. Hey, yeah. He's kind of. Hello. You got. And the other one.
Hmm.
They will. For your love. Because they're. You're right. Of course. You haven't turned. So. Oh. Don't. Push the button. I do. In. Yeah. If you. I would. I'm. Up. It's not. It's not the. Yeah. Yeah. But we. Yeah. There is. And. He. Hi. See you later. Well, I'll be. There. So. I don't want to. You don't. Remember when the. Turn. That's good. Good job on that, too. Yeah. I got a lot. Feedback. Good feedback? Yeah. Okay. I've been trying to get a hold of the. Correctional officer that you pointed me to for the HED story. Uh, but he's only engaged this week. Probably part of the week, so. Hopefully, I'll be able to talk. Like a prior. Okay. Good. Yeah, yeah. Good.
Okay, we're back. See how we're doing. Let's see, we got time now. Eight fifty-eight. I'll take a motion to. Come out of executive session. Pierce, Krogman, second. All those favor. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, consent agenda. Is there anything on the minutes? Travel requests? Personal action or human services report? Do you have any question or? Wish to discuss? Uh, without objection. Uh, Alex. We'll accept the, uh, consent agenda. Uh, we got, um. Two minutes here before nine, I guess. Got out here. A little early. Well, we better wait in case somebody wants to. Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded their claims. Prove the claims. No question or discussion? All those favors signified by saying aye? Pose same sign. Okay, we'll move to B. I don't know if it's fair to have a one-minute report. You don't need a motion. Okay, nine o'clock. I guess they're not gonna be here. Any, uh, open to have a public hearing on retail on-off sale? Small beverage license and a South Dakota farm wine lic- wine license to West Oak. Pub? Any, uh, proponents? Any opponents? Hearing none. Uh, close the public hearing. Commissioners. As far as action. Krogman. Krogman, Miller, Pierce, discussion.
I just have a, a question for, um, Mr. Hill. If he's had an opportunity to look at that and. Based on our new alcohol ordinance. If everything's in compliance with the Brookings County zoning regulations.
Yes, it is, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Question or discussion on this, uh, uh, motion? Okay. Hearing, I'm gonna do the roll call, Jenna. Please.
Aye.
Miller. Jensen.
Right.
Pierce.
Aye.
Wysef.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, now back. We've got ten minutes to, uh, hear some, uh. From the department heads. Go ahead. Vicky will save you for last. Does anybody got a ten-minute report they wanna come up and give? Oh.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
I did include a staff report inside the, um. Packet for you. Everything went well. The. It was actually a quite good conference down in Sanford. Last week, they had the, uh. One of the medical disaster groups come and, and. Somebody that actually caught Ebola showed up and, and gave a presentation. Quite, quite interesting, the process they go through. And one thing they warned us is, they said, you know, Ebola isn't. It's far away, but one that could come in and, and has, is starting to rear its head more is. One called MERS, Middle Eastern Respiratory Syndrome. And, um. In Korea, they just had, uh, they have, like a hundred people under quarantine. And one of them broke voluntary quarantine and flew to China. And of course, he caught MERS when he was in China. So. So, we do have to be careful from the health side and, and. Of course, the Department of Health will be monitoring that one. And, uh, last night I visited with the radio club and got our procedures. To verify our procedures, 'cause later this week, matter of fact, starting this evening. There's some supercell. Storms gonna be probably popping near pier, more so in the middle of the state. But you never know. We're in a marginal risk and you just never know when they, when they start hitting. And of course, we are part of a Ting County area from Yankton all the way up here. We're the, we're the northern anchor of it. And then we, Yankton's our lower anchor and. Ma- uh, Davison County and Minor and, and some of those counties. So. If they get hit and we don't get hit tomorrow, I may call Commissioner Wysef and have to go somewhere. Just temporarily to, to provide support. But we would, we'll keep the commission fully aware of that. Tomorrow and Thursday, as long as we don't get hit with storms, there is a multi-hazard. Emergency management planning course in Madison that I'm going to attend. And that'll help us in case our local schools have any, any. Need any help doing their emergency plans. I've heard on the radio that they're doing, right now they're working on their emergency plans. And, uh, this will allow me to give them some assistance if needed. South Dakota State University is also sending their emergency manager to the same course. And other than that, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
The Homeland Security grants applications, what's that all about?
Oh, yep. The. Once, every year. Government, local governments are allowed to apply for Homeland Security funds. And it's for. Needs for Homeland Security Defense such as radios and. Gas masks and stuff that, that, there's a detailed list. And we'll have that on the website. I did say I'd have it on the website. We'll, we'll get that on the website immediately. We'll, we'll get that on the website immediately, and it allows, the local entities, they apply online. It goes into pier, and then in September, I'll have a meeting with, with that Tin Region Emergency Management Group, and we'll have to prioritize on which ones. But we've, our Tin County region doesn't, we get maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for all Tin Counties, so it's...
Are sirens included on that list?
You can put them on, on the list, just have to realize you're long-term. This, it takes a year to just about to get this particular grant. You can, you can apply, but it doesn't, doesn't guarantee anything.
I'm, I'm just wondering, based on our meeting last time and our conversation about siren, that maybe that won't be the only siren we'll be replacing, and maybe we ought to ask for a grant for that, but throw that out.
Yeah, to ask for the grant, you gotta have quotes and, gotta have so many different quotes and everything to be put in. So, if you apply for the grant, you gotta be ready to move on, on the grant when it comes.
Are we going to have any other siren requests, do you think, in the near future?
Well, you know, you, you never know where lightning strikes. Majority of the time, when a, when a tower goes down, it's 'cause of lightning would, would strike it. We, we do have some communities that's looking at putting second sirens in and things like that, and that's where they would be. Once we get it online, then we'll send it to everybody, all the community leaders, that, so they can apply.
Yeah, the city's doing a little moving around, but they've solved their problem in-house.
Yeah, and, and they're pretty well covered. Sooner or later, they're gonna have to, they keep going south, sooner or later, they're gonna have to put a new siren down there. And we'll, but hopefully, they're gonna program that in enough time to allow us to use the budget process on, on that particular one. One thing that we'll probably apply for might be radios for the Homeland Security Grant, 'cause we do, we're gonna have to start replacing radios before long, and... Anything else?
Okay, thanks, Bob.
You're welcome.
Joyce, you got a four-minute one?
Good morning. I'm gonna be really short and sweet. Appraising staff in our office will be leaving today for the South Dakota Association of Assessing Officers Annual Conference being held in Yankton, so pray that we don't get hit by bad weather. And we will be down there until Friday, so it lasts the rest of the week. The week of June fifteenth through the eighteenth, I will be attending the NACRO Conference in Wisconsin, which is the North Central Region Association of Assessing Officers, which is also the week that you're hearing budgets, and so I will send my deputy, Chris, into the budget hearing, so that's it. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're down to a three, a three-minute one. That's, no way. Two minutes.
Two minutes, sorry. Good morning. I just quickly, we have thirty-one inmates, fifty-six on, on PBTs. I thought it was a nice article in the paper on the safe room, and I know I, I said in there that we hadn't talked, that I hadn't personally talked to the hospital administrator, but Abby and myself and the police chief and hospital staff in the emergency room, we've been talking about the safe room for, what, two years probably, if not longer, so I just wanted to clarify that, but I thought it was a good article. I've had some people calling me and, and thought that was a good idea, too, so I had some positive, positive feedback from that article. Busy, the last two weeks have been busy for the sheriff's department. We had bicycle safety at Volga. I think there was over eighty kids that participated. Beta brought over three buses. They loaded all the kids up, and then we put staff in each bus and talked about the danger, the dangerous intersections and all kind, in Volga, getting the kids familiar, with, when they're riding their bikes. Also, the state of South Dakota provided bicycle helmets, so we were able to give helmets to each, anybody that didn't have a bicycle helmet, got a helmet that day. So, it was a good, I think we wrote, or they put out, we signed up about sixty bikes, too, for bicycle licenses, so. So, we've have, we have over five hundred bikes registered with the sheriff's office now in the county, which I think is, is a, is a good. We continue to get scam reports. IRS is hitting us again. Also, a computer repair scam is where they call and they're offering you a deal on computers, you know, for three fifty, three hundred and fifty dollars. They'll fix your computer, and then soon as you, soon as you give them your information for the credit card, they go, oh, we're, we're not able to fix your computer, you know? But now they got your information, so. With all the road work, it's surprising, we've had minimal complaints on, on, on that. One accident on, truck backed into a car on North Seventy-Seven. Also, we're getting complaints on garbage and ditches. For some reason, normally, it's, it's, it's earlier in the season, but we continue to get garbage and ditches. And that's it for, for right now. Unless you got some questions.
You're not leaving.
I do have a complaint. There is garbage east of my house in the ditch.
Is there?
There's a microwave and a hide-a-bed and a lot of cans.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, the last one, the last one that we checked on, actually is over by my house, so I went over and checked on it. The only thing I found in the, in the, in the couch was a marijuana cigarette. So, they lost their marijuana cigarette in the couch.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff, and it's time for a public hearing to approve, and I'll open the public hearing on renewals for retail on-off sale, malt beverage license for the corner gas and goodies, and a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for Danceland Campground. Proponents? Opponents? Action. Oh, yeah, thank you. Stephanie's keeping me on task here. We're gonna close, close the public hearing. Hearing no comments, action. Krogman. Miller. Okay, discussion.
Ms. Howard, do you know what the violation was for the one that's applying that had the violation?
On Danceland, you're talking?
I think both of them had violations.
Yeah, so do an underage, on a sting.
I just, I know that this is our first time we've done a hearing where we're following the statute that says people have to come in if they had a violation in the last year when they apply. There has to be a public hearing. And I think those people should appear and tell us what they're doing to take care of the problem, because this is a problem in Brookings County with sales to underage people, and I don't think we ought to approve a license when nobody came to just talk to us about what the problem is, what steps are being taken to handle it, and, and those kinds of things. And I know this is our first, our first time through this process, but I think those people should be here.
In fairness to them, traditionally, they don't, because they feel like they're dealing with the state on this, that there's suspension, and then the second violation is with the state. I think it's the third is the, really, the, in, in the same year. But as far as the county commission giving it, but I think in fairness, I think they would need to be brought up to a higher level of information, like the commission requests your presence, because normally, the license holder assumes they're working with the state, not with us so much, on this violation.
However, we are the licensing agent. Underage consumption is a problem in Brookings County. If we, as the governing board, don't take that seriously, why should the people that are causing us the problem be doing that? Costs Brookings County a lot of money every year through the sheriff's office on enforcement of alcohol offenses? And I just think it's a courtesy when you're told that there's an issue with your license, that you show up in front of the commission to answer any questions that the commission might have about what's going on with your license. And it isn't that it's a state issue. We are the licensing agency.
Mr. Chair. I agree with that, however, it, they've never been required to do so before. So, in following what Commissioner Wysef said, if we indeed expect that they should come in, which I don't think that's a bad idea, then I think we need to notify them. And I, I think this one, we have to let it go. But from now on, we will notify them and say that if there has been an issue, we expect that they will come in and do exactly what you just said. But I don't think we can hold this one up. But I think in the future, that's fine.
Can we deny a license?
Certainly.
Based on that?
We may.
So, we have the teeth to actually enforce it if we ask them to come in and say what you're doing, and it's not just lip service. We actually have some authority to say, that's not good enough. And this has happened every year for the last three years, and you've come in here, so, okay?
We do. I do have a question for Mr. Hill, because based on our new alcohol ordinance, they have to be in compliance with the zoning regulations to get their renewal on their license. Are they both in compliance?
Yes, they are, ma'am, at this time.
Thank you.
Well, I, I certainly understand, and point well-taken, I think. I think that's a very good point, and it does send a message. I think Commissioner Miller is on the same page, too. We can't hold these people without giving them notice that they're expected to be here, so I would have no problem approving whether it's a policy or something that, if this something happens, that when your license comes up, because it's public hearing, we expect you to be there, an explanation of, of steps. Like you said, there's a change in program. I think it's a very good idea. I'd be all for it.
Any other question or discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Miller.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Nay.
Krogman.
Aye.
Wysef.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, number eight, regular, whoa, wait a minute. Geez, we've got department heads sitting out here. Sorry. Didn't mean to ignore you. I guess Dick, we're gonna save Vicky for last. Got it going too smoothly there for us.
Okay. One of the things, I got a quote from Geotech Engineering and Testing Services to do some borings out on the four sixty-eight, that's at Dairy Road up northeast of Bruce. I guess with this grant, we'll be the administrator, so that means that every bill that would come in, I would prefer that we make you aware of it as a board, and then I'll go forward and do the contractual part of it, if everyone's in agreement. And this Geotech Engineering testing with the borings will just give us an idea of, they'll make fourteen borings, six feet deep, and that'll determine what the base is like, what the aggregate of the surface and all that stuff is, and then they'll put together a projection or a profile of what they would suggest as far as whether we use geosynthetic materials, whether we use more base cores, whether it has to be dug out, whether the drainage. But in a nutshell, I think it would be money well spent. It's thirty-one hundred dollars. However, part of the problem out there is not knowing what we're actually working with, and, and this would be a very good start to get the ball on the right track. So, if it's your consensus that, that I can go ahead and do it, it would be something where I'll keep the bills separate and just submit them, you know, as a claim for you guys, but we'll pay them and then we send it in to get reimbursed through that grant program, and I'm not sure whether that will be, you know, monthly, whether it'll be quarterly or what. I'll, I'll find that out, but it's, if you want, they can start in about another week, and if you don't, if you wanna wait until we get the clear understanding of what they'll want.
Mr. Chair. Dick, we've, we have not received a grant for the engineering portion of this yet, have we?
Not for the engineering, but my understanding, that's supposed to be done by the fifteenth of June.
Okay.
And that's when we'll get, I think we've been approved, however, the dollar amount has not been determined.
Okay.
And, and my discussions with Paula Hughesinger is her name at the DOT, it's hard to pronounce, harder to spell. She mentioned that basically, there's a clear understanding that that's what the money will be spent for. If you'd prefer to wait, I could just schedule it later. It might not be a bad idea, 'cause there's no real immediate, you know?
Dick, could this possibly fall underneath the engineering costs, the borings, or?
Oh, sure. Yep. And the, the reason being is the engineering, when I visited with Banner, they would feel more comfortable if they knew what they were working with, and it was much cheaper to hire an independent, you know, Geotech to go out and do it. And so, I guess my thoughts were, if it's another week or so before they can get out and do the borings, and then it'll take them probably a week or two to get the results, and then I'll have the information that Banner needs to move forward if, if we need to come up with a plan. So, that's what it is. And somewhere's in their services, I suppose what would be proper, if you wanted to move forward, would be to make a motion to allow me to sign the acceptance of this proposal and, and get it going with Geotech. And if you would rather wait, just, let's just forget it, and I'll bring it back in, in two weeks, if that would be your...
Well, we'll have to wait to put an action item on the agenda. And as far as waiting till June fifteenth, what's the thoughts of the board?
Well, I didn't have it on the agenda, so why...
Well, just a consensus.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, attorney is the claim.
When it comes...
Yeah. I guess the, well, we got two issues, I guess. One is the procedure for all the bills, and, and the other is, do you wanna proceed with this one before the engineering? You want, do you want him to proceed with that before?
I guess I would just assume that we get going on it.
Okay.
Because otherwise, when we do get the engineering grant, it'll hold everything up again if we wait, and we've already waited, the townships are already upset with us. I'd like to get going on it. That's a small amount to take out of the two hundred thousand. I, I think we had it rock and roll here.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess the direction is to proceed, and then with Geotech.
Okay.
And I think you're in agreement that the procedure he laid out on the bills, let's keep them separate from, okay? So, we're clear on that.
All right. And the, the second thing I have is, Telkamp House movers would like a permit to cross the bridge south of White on Highway Twenty-five. It's a kind of a one-time, unique thing. There are, we do issue permits for a one-time, like moving or, or extreme situation. And, but in those cases, it's always better if a person would bring that to the board, because then they're aware that, that this is circumstances that are, are not really normal or ordinary, or it isn't somebody like an equipment dealer that just wants to move a piece of equipment for convenience sake, or this and that. The other thing that's different is crossing a bridge, and I, I thank Mr. Telkamp for bringing it to my attention early enough so I could address some of these things, but with a bridge, they go by gross weight. And normally, a house being moved, because they're spreading their load over both lanes of traffic, and they got axles upon axles, they're really not damaging the road, and to get the road permits is no problem. However, in this case, where they'll be crossing a bridge where it's a gross weight, he needs this permit just to cross that and, and to do the right thing. My suggestion would be to allow it. However, I think we have to make it clear that, that this is after we've gotten a very thorough understanding of what and why this has to happen. And, and he told me of the alternate routes, that, that he can't make the corners and stuff like that. So, he was just seeing if, if this was a possibility, it won't be moved till possibly the... It won't be moved till possibly the middle of July is what he had anticipated. And the other thing with this permit that's kind of unique is that with the length of his load and the number of axles and whatever, when he goes across the bridge, one part will be completely off the bridge before the second part starts. So he's not putting the entire load on the structure at one time. And that can really make a difference, too. Basically, in a nutshell, if two semis met on that bridge at the same time, that would be comparable to what he's putting on that load moment, on that bridge momentarily. But again, we're the protectors of our infrastructure, and it's very important that we regulate those controls. But that's also why we have special permits.
Dick, is he well aware, in case of a failure, that replacement cost?
Well, that's five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
That's what I mean. By issuing this permit, are we waiving him from liability on this structure?
I would probably say yes. Not, I don't know if you'd say completely. Probably have to ask her.
Yeah, and what, Dick and I have visited about this quite a bit. What I would suggest is, he's given you the background today. We put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and you actually make a motion on this. The concern here, we do have an ordinance that establishes overweight vehicle permits for county roads in Brookings County, and that was done in two thousand and one. And I think that should be included in your packet for the next meeting to review. So that would allow the procedure for how Dick does it. But the concern here is because of the federal funding attached to the bridge, we need that extra step of oversight and authority, making sure that you as a body have reviewed this situation and you're comfortable allowing Dick to proceed. But addressing the liability, Commissioner Jensen just mentioned this ordinance, and this is why I think you should have it and review it, says a possession of an overweight permit shall not relieve the applicant of civil liability and responsibility for personal injury or property damage which may incur in connection with the movement of the permitted vehicle, including the liability for damage to roads, bridges, signs, or other highway structures. So there are some other aspects, and that's why I think you should review that all and then make a motion on it at the next meeting. And the time, I don't think it would restrict Mr. Telkamp with the timeframe.
No, it shouldn't.
Couple questions. Well, my thought was the liability the other way, too. I don't want to be liable to pay for a new bridge, which that ordinance does, but to pay for a house, but we'd have to make sure that he understands. He puts his, this house at risk, not on us, that he's doing the risk or whoever is having it moved. The other, one thought that concerned me about this. Oh, what for this, it's a partial damage. Yeah, if the whole bridge goes, you know, you come out, take a photo, and it'll be a big news item. How do you judge what a partial damage was, would be? Couple bolts pop or whatever happens? And then how do you handle those kinds of things?
You don't really, on a one-time thing. I suppose you could take before and after pictures, but what that would tell you, I don't know. I'm...
See, I'd hate to have the guy put in a hundred thousand dollars on a bridge repair, or fifty or a hundred, for something we're gonna replace anyway. I mean, I just didn't know how a partial, the whole thing goes, you know? It's like having a fire insurance. Sometimes it's better to have the whole thing go than a partial. Just something to think about before we take action.
Did you say he was gonna put together a reason and then his whole process and reasoning? He has to ask for this permit?
No, he talked to me about it. He'd started Clearback in early May, asking what things he might have to do. And I asked him, "Why is this the only way to get there?"
Well, and that was my thought. Is he coming, it'd be nice to know where he's coming from, where he's trying to get to. And it just seems to me, you know, if he goes, maybe there's another paved road two miles down the road, that yes, he has to go four miles out of his way, but, you know, and to have the turning lanes and wide enough shoulders to be able to handle it. I would think there's gotta be an alternate route that would be able to get there. And I know it's gonna make costs a little more, but I understand the one-time thing, and I'm more looking at an emergency than a convenience. And I'm looking at this almost as a convenience for him, not an emergency. But I guess we're gonna put it on the agenda, and he wants to put something in writing to us that would say, "This is why I'm going this way. This is why I need to do this, and this is why I'm offering the permit." And I guess I'd wait to rule out that after I saw that. But my gut tells me it's, there's probably an alternate route that could be used, even though it's a little bit inconvenient.
Okay, then...
May I say one thing on that?
Sure.
When you put all that in the packet for next time, couldn't you just put in a blank copy of the permit form? I'd just like to see what the permit form looks like.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep. Then the project on Highway twenty-four should be done. They're just waiting for the pavement to cool thoroughly before they open the road, and that should happen today down south of town. And then the paving on Highway seventy-seven north will start as soon as they get some other things wrapped up. It's already milled and everything. It's ready to go. So it'll just be a matter of maybe the weather and scheduling. But it'll happen very soon, and it'll probably only take four or five days at the most to complete. And planning, from my standpoint, for the state grant program has been compiled. And once the state determines exactly what information it needs, we can submit an application for about any project that we've listed. I also took our road and road thing out another five years. So that puts that to ten. Put the bridge structures out another five. So that puts that, ten and beyond. I showed LeAnn the signs, which is very kind of cumbersome in a hard copy form. I've got maps that the state... The thing that still kind of baffles me a little bit is almost all the information that they were asking for in that preliminary, preliminary little synopsis that they gave you guys at that district meeting was on the DOT website. I mean, we took it right off the DOT website. Jim was so kind as to print the maps out for us. I just can hardly believe that when they come out with the criteria necessary, it's gonna be asking for something that they don't already have access to. That's a guess on my part, but I hope I'm right because I don't think they want, you know, from sixty-six counties, I don't think they want all that duplication and whatever, just busy work to look through that stuff. So we'll see, but that pretty well finishes me up unless there's a question, and there are also things further on the agenda that I'll elaborate on.
We just, laying here on our desk, I see you got a letter from Todd Case that they're gonna be at the...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You been to, that's not a...
Yeah, we go every year.
That's not...
The trouble with that meeting is they hold it every year, the same day as they do the pre-construction meeting for the striping contract. So we take two people, and then one goes to the striping, and I go to the STIP thing. But yeah, this should be one of the last ones because that's taking it out as far as the DOT will allow. So kind of making history here.
And I forgot, you said that, we were talking to the safety people about they were gonna come make evaluation. I forgot the date. I was in Sinai, they asked, and I says, "Oh, we're gonna do something there," but...
He didn't give me an exact date. He just forwarded me the email that showed that he related on to the correct people, and they were supposed to be getting ahold of me, but I've not heard anything yet. So I can follow up. I'll see what their thoughts are, when they could be.
Yeah. So then I didn't forget. I didn't know.
Yeah.
Dick, is that team, is that safety review team coming out to the Sinai Road then?
Yes. Yep. And it'll, I forget his name, the one that took Cliff Ryer's place. And they've got, I forget, there's a girl on it. And they were the ones, they'll go around and review, like they do our railroad crossings and all that stuff for safety. So I imagine whenever they could schedule a route that they could cover in one day, then they'll be out. But I'll follow up and find out if they have any idea.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dick. Hello, Vicky.
Good morning.
Morning.
You should have received in your packet the staff report. And part of it is, we are buying five used e-poll books from the Secretary of State's office for two thousand and twenty-five dollars. And Kristin, Stacy, and I kind of talked it over and figured it was good to have some spares or if we did end up with another vote center that we had some, so we'd be covered and wouldn't have to pay the full price. The state is going to take that right out of our HAVA account, so there won't be an actual claim that comes through. So you won't see it on the claims. But we still have a balance of about forty-five thousand in our HAVA account. And the deadline for getting budgets in was last Friday, and all the departments have their budgets in. So been entering those into computers. Stacy and I are gonna meet this week and probably next week to get everything finalized, so we'll be ready for the budget hearings. And next Tuesday is the Lake Hendricks Road District election over at Lake Hendricks. So that, you approved the Road District petition, and so they will have their actual election next week. So we've got some things to get ready for them, so they'll have it for their election. And we are going through a tax deed process to take tax deed to a lot in Bruce and also a house that is pretty much not in good condition in Sinai. The person passed away. So we are in the process of taking tax deed to both of those properties. And that pretty much covers what we've been doing. Any questions?
Do, does your office staff the election on the Road District?
No, they have their own people, three people from the Road District that do it. But we will give them the instructions, and I think Kristin and I are both gonna go up there, too. And we will meet with them before the election. We won't be there during the election. But they'll use our ballot box and the vote, or the different things that, you know, we have here.
And then as relates to the two agenda items that had to do with the alcohol licenses, then next year, will you tell people they need?
Yes, we will. I've got that written down. So we will include that in, so, yep.
Okay, and then I think you're hanging around for when our Commission Director Department report about the surplus and the finances, correct?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Vicky. All right, gone through everybody. I haven't skipped anybody. We'll begin regular business. Under eight A, action to approve request for funding for one thousand five hundred dollars for Uncle Sam Jam Fourth of July event held at the Swift Hill Center. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Pierce?
Second.
Miller? Any discussion or question on this item? I guess, you know, I was kind of plowing through the statutes the other day. There's one under recreation. Is that where, I found out that sometimes the statutes are broad. Sometimes they're specific. For example, there's a statute that authorizes to spend money on Memorial Day, not any other day, but just for Memorial Day. And is this fall under recreational activity? Because that's the only statute I could find that we could spend money like this.
Well, we have a specific budget line for these types of items.
Yeah.
I don't have the statute on hand.
But we don't have to have when we have a budget line.
I don't have the statute on hand.
Yeah, I'm just saying, the only one I could find was recreational activity. I'm just saying, the state statute gets awful particular on certain items, saying this is what we're allowed to spend money for, and then some are not. This applies to the next one and any other things we come up. But something to think about, if the county, state, the state committee, state and county government, maybe they could tune those up to clear up some of those statutes that have been around for a long time. Any other discussion or question on this motion? Hearing none, all is, yes, yes.
Stacy, that fifteen hundred was what we gave last year, was that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Then it says, if there is a specific activity you'd like to sponsor, fifteen hundred dollars towards?
We usually just, typically what we have done in the past is just give them the fifteen, what, the amount that they ask for. And they put it to whatever they need to put it toward. But they're offering to let us say a specific thing. But, you know, I don't know exactly what they need it for. So I think we just give them the money like we normally do.
I didn't know if there was a, if we'd have a booth or something.
No. Nope.
I had a kissing booth in college. Didn't make a lot of money. An informational booth or something. Okay. Any other discussion? Maybe a dunk tank for the chairman. I had to go to the hospital on a dunk tank. It's a long story. So I'm a little leery of those.
I have to like that idea. Could you be a consensus?
Any other question or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Item B, action to approve request for funding for Elkland Special Days Committee for five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars for their annual fireworks display for the Fourth of July. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Pierce?
Second.
Miller? Any question or discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Action to approve request for permission to hold fireworks display on Friday, June twelfth, at Meadow Creek Golf Course for a vulgar old-timers' day celebration.
Move to approve.
Miller and Krogman? Any question or discussion on this permit? Hearing none, call the, I mean, geez, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, there is a letter in your packet that Vicky referred to, to the SDSU Student Association President regarding having a vote center location on campus. Anybody have any? Well, let's have a motion to approve the letter, I guess. Krogman?
Second.
Miller? Okay, now question or discussion concerning that letter?
And you can't, I understand you can't write a letter by committee, but the phrase in there that said, or the threat of parking tickets, maybe we could phrase that just a little differently. But other than that, I thought the letter was great.
Maybe even if you said something about parking spaces designated for the public because people that get ticketed on campus are people that don't have the parking permit. So something that just emphasizes a public space available.
You thought it sounded good? The amendment, I mean, the letter amended. That's, I don't think we need to make an amendment to the motion on this. Any other question or discussion concerning this letter? Okay? Hearing none, all those, all those in favor of the motion could say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Action to approve abatement number two zero one five dash zero zero eight, abatement request made by Cassius Disbro for parcel number four zero nine 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 dash zero 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 one one dash one zero seven dash, not, dash, zero zero, in the amount of forty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Is there?
Move to approve.
Miller? And Jensen? Okay, any question or discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. F, action to approve resolution number 15-33, a resolution authorizing the purchase of real estate for 213th Street reconstruction.
Move approval.
Second.
Pierce, Krogman, any question on this?
I, I do think we need to amend the resolution, unless it's in there, I just don't see the names of the sellers, am I missing it?
It's in the legal description, if you look under the law from John Ruthian in the amount of, yeah, it's just all coupled in that one paragraph. And just to note for everyone's benefit, this is the same as the process we went through for Thirty-Fourth Avenue, we'll pass this and then after the twenty-day referendum period, we'd be able to close on the property.
Did that work get done?
It did, and I have some additional work to do, so I'm glad we did that.
Very good. Any more questions or discussion? On this resolution? I'm going to do the roll call, Jenna, please.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Okay, G. Action to approve resolution number 15-34, resolution authorizing the purchase of a dump body, hoist, hydraulics, truck plow hitch with options reversible plow, comma, midpoint ten-foot wing, assist axle, pup pull plate and sand spreader based upon the price established through the Brookings County bid process.
Move to approve.
Miller?
Second.
Krogman, now, question and discussion, maybe Dick would like to address the commission.
After the bid opening and hearing some review or comments from the vendors, I guess I would like a, a motion or advise that we reject all bids and that we clarify some of the specs and rebid it, and I guess the best reason for this is I think it would definitely be in the best interest of the county to reject all bids and re-advertise, and the confusion, you know, that's debatable, but, but it's still, you like to be as open and fair as you can and, and I think it would, now that we realize what could possibly be taken differently or interpreted differently within the specs, I would feel more comfortable if we just clarified it and rebid it and it'll delay things a couple weeks is all, but that's pretty minor compared to possibly having other ramifications if they so choose, so.
And I can follow up a little bit on this, Dick and I have visited for, in quite a bit of detail on this and since the bids were opened, there is one particular spec that just caused some concern and like Dick said, it is debatable what the, the proper interpretation or industry strand, industry standard would be, but we felt in order for Brookings County to ensure we're getting precisely what we want and need, it would be in our best interest to reject, rebid, Dick has said that won't affect his timeframe, it's not a huge rush on this project, and in all honesty, it's, it's probably the most fair to the vendors that are involved anyway, and state law does allow you to reject bids on a project if it is in the best interest of the purchasing agency.
Right, now, yeah, so go ahead.
I'm sorry, I would move to amend the motion to reject all bids and to re-advertise.
Second.
Moved in second, that changed, to amend the motion from approved to reject, any question or discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of amending the motion signify, you want roll call?
I think we should have roll call on this.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we have before us a different motion of a rejection of the bids, any question or discussion on the amended motion? Hearing none, roll call, please, Jenna.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You bet. H. Action to approve agreement number 15-61, a right, road right-of-way use agreement between Brookings County and the Capstone 2020 Big Stone South Brookings County Project.
To approve.
Krogman?
Second.
Miller, question or discussion? None? Okay, hearing none, let's see, was that a, just approval agreement, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Aye, action to approve agreement number 15-62, a state of South Dakota sub-reception agreement for the provider of service between Brookings County and South Dakota Department of Health for WIC services.
Move to approve.
Miller? Krogman, question or discussion on the agreement? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the agreements signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Commission Department Director Report.
Can I go back real quick?
Sure.
On the WIC one there, since this is June first to thirty-first, are we going to put this into our budget next year or this year, because it's, agreement's kind of splitting us in half here?
This doesn't cost the county anything, this is all state money.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Perfect.
Right?
Perfect.
Yeah.
This is our agreement with them to provide WIC services for the county.
Right, but I was thinking we had to do some matching to that.
We pay the, we pay the.
We, we pay the.
Yeah, right there. Right there on your screen, on your screen, the amount provided by the state is the thirty-two thousand, the provider, that would be us, would be zero. We do provide them with their secretaries, the, we have a, a full-time and then we're hiring the part-time, and we do that and that obviously will be part of our budget as part of the salaries and benefits.
Okay, but that's not, that's not.
That's not part of, that's not this.
That's not going up though, because there's some increase here, but that's not going to apply to us, right?
Right, just whatever, whatever increase goes up for salaries and benefits would be the increase for the county.
Gotcha, okay.
For their, the county employees that work in that office.
But we control that.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, very good question, all right. Stacy?
In my staff report, I'll get to that, I'll put that up on the screen, I gave kind of a synopsis of the general fund surplus cash analysis, Vicky and I took a look at that and noticed that we were lower, and I think I provided you with some of the, um, this is where we're at, yeah, the graphs, you know, we're at, as of the end of April, we were at twenty-four, twenty-six, two percent, you know, in the past, if you look, here's fourteen, we've, we're typically, you know, thirty-nine there, and then in past years, forty-two, thirty-nine, forty-three percent, and taking a look at why that might be the case is, this year we're transferring approximately six million dollars over to the highway fund out of the general fund, that's about double what we've done in past years, and at, at this point of the year, half of it has been transferred, because we do the first month of each quarter, so half of it has already been transferred over, which would really mean the full amount in past years, if you compare it to past years, so that money being transferred out of the general fund, I think is affecting our surplus cash analysis. That being said, as you can, and, and the, on your screen, that shows the amount that is budgeted, I think it's a, I think that's supposed to be a five. Oh, this was, this was in thirteen, we did two-point-six, in fourteen, we budgeted two-point-eight, and then this year we have five-point-nine, so almost six million dollars that we're transferring over. This, I did, um, this is just a projection of where May might be, I did this on the twenty-seventh, so the end of last week, and it goes up to about twenty-nine, about thirty percent, so it's still low, but we're, it's, it's, it's a little bit better. The other thing to note though, too, is you can see here, we have the six-hundred-thousand dollars for highway and the five-point-two million dollars for economic development highway projects assigned, those are assigned dollars in the general fund. If those dollars were not assigned dollars in the general fund, that would go towards our surplus, which would really bump up our amount, which would put our percentage back up, but we have those assigned right now, so they don't go towards the surplus because they're assigned. So, at any time, if you feel that we're in a position you don't want to be in, you can unassign those dollars at any time with the simple motion from the board. At this time, I'd maybe let it play out and see where we're at and we'll keep a, you know, Vicky and I will keep a close eye on it, so, but I think that's, just at looking at that, the dollar figures this year, and the reason we have six million transferred is for our road projects that we have, 213th and Thirty-Fourth Avenue. Do you have any questions on that before I move on?
Yes, Leanne.
We had some conversations previously about our categories on, on the budget and I know that we've got this much assigned to, that's already assigned to highway projects, it would be much easier, for those of us that are new and maybe for the public, but I'm just throwing this out, if, if we set and are assigned, we have this much for Thirty-Fourth Avenue, and we've got this much for 213th Avenue, because the numbers I've got in my mind are, is it, is it three million for Thirty-Fourth and one million for 213th, approximately? I mean, those numbers aren't.
I think it's two-something for Thirty-Fourth and the million some, but we got a grant, the grants there, yeah, so.
But of our money, if, to be able to see, because we're talking out, you know, when we've got five million, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars listed there and it doesn't really show what that's being used for, it'd be nice to be able to delineate that a little bit, but.
Dick, Dick wants to.
Some of that remainder money is like what you would normally transfer as part of operations.
Right.
One thing that, I, I think I'm talking about a different category of money here, but like, for example, with Bose getting our overlaying and patching done so early, we've spent almost a million and a half dollars right there that, well, I think it was in the claims this time for eight-hundred-and-some thousand or whatever, so that's, that's the part that I need to make sure that I've got enough to operate on, and the others, like you mentioned, aren't earmarked for those particular projects.
The naming process, Leanne, is the thing that, and it has confused me since day one, and we're trying to dance around statute and then you can, it's like having a cookie jar to me at home, it says, uh, this is for your new boat, but then along comes a, a trailer you get interested in, so you take out of there with a motion, but the state requires you to, if you're going to set aside, you have to have some name, otherwise it goes towards your being, Vicky, help me out, okay?
Yeah, it, it has to be assigned for a particular thing.
So we could assign to Thirty-Fourth Avenue, so we'd know.
But I don't think the funds are coming out of the assigned stuff, aren't the funds already transferred to them on the?
Right.
Yeah, well, I, I understand, I think we can do that on the budget, I'm hoping we can, because I'm in the same thing, I'd like to identify a little, little more closely to what we're using them for or what we're saving for, now that we have a long-term budget, I agree with you, but I think maybe we can do that in the budget process, I'm hoping to, I guess.
And then my last question on this, and I'll let somebody else talk, is, okay, so we have a maximum under state statute that we can have in surplus, which is our forty percent.
Yes, and the only time we are statutorily required to, um, to submit that is March, September, and then they also look at it as December thirty-first, too. So at, at times we could be above that, but if it's a reporting month, March, September, December, we need to be at forty or below.
But is there any minimum that we have to have?
No.
All right, so when you're saying we only have this much for surplus funds, if it's because we are assigning in a more diligent fashion, that's really not a budget crunch, it's just that we're.
No, because it's assigned, I don't think it's a problem, and, and these assigned dollars and the transferred dollars are two different things, we're not, we're not transferring these assigned dollars.
Right.
So we still have, we're transferring money out of general fund, these assigned dollars are still there, that if, once we do the transfer, if we've paid for the projects, we can unassign these dollars and then they go, if we don't assign them to anything else, they go back as surplus. Does that make sense?
And then when we receive the grant, the grant will come back into the general fund?
I'm not sure if the grant can go back into the general fund, it might have to go to the Roden Bridge Fund.
Roden Bridge, okay.
But then we don't have to use these assigned dollars for those projects, once the grant dollars come in, we can either assign these for different projects or unassign them altogether.
Are the grant dollars going to come in after the bills are paid or before?
I'm not sure.
Well, it's something we could look into there, would you look into that, Stacy?
Yeah.
Just the timing of those.
Because that could cause a cash flow issue, is my, my concern, I guess, if, if all, we're starting to pay for stuff early and then we don't get paid till after the fact, is that going to cause a cash flow, but may not be a big deal either.
Something Mr. Krogman brought up, just right there, and I've been thinking about, and maybe that doesn't bother the commissioners one way or the other, but a lot of entities, government entities, public entities, have a cash flow situation, because when, especially us, we get two good months and live on the rest of the ten, and some set, they have a number or, or a percentage, whatever those entities, that that is their bottom line because they don't want to borrow money, which, when I was going through those state statutes, I found you can borrow money, get a loan, and in no county governments, they have the more restrictive bonding process, but we can go out and get a loan, but most bodies don't like, it doesn't look good in the paper that you're going to get a loan, and, or the radio, and, but I was wondering if the commissioners would want Vicky and Stacy to sit down and, and have a proposal of the bottom, and we may want to philosophically stay above that, and that's, you know, fine for special funds, but we need to maybe know what the, a bottom, whether it be a percentage or a dollar figure, and I just didn't know if any of you had any thoughts on that.
I like that idea, just to, to know what percentage in our general fund that if we're getting below, I, I'm guessing that's the reason you're bringing this whole up right now, is that, look, we're getting lower than we normally are, and this is the reason but why, and two months down the road, if we get to, I mean, if I look at the graphs, how low do we get?
Let's get rid of the graphs.
Sometimes we get down to ten percent, correct, like in March, right before that, or?
Usually January, February, March are low because we don't have any of our revenue in yet, we're spending, we're paying bills, but, you know, the majority of our revenue comes in in April and October.
But I guess, you know, that's where my question, I think that Tom's coming from.
And that's why, yeah, we start dropping again, because we spend lots of bills and then September's usually pretty low, but then October, we get our second half, taxes are due, that's when our second big amount of revenue comes in in October, and then it brings it back up, so.
But I guess, so, you know, it's nice to have the paychecks all clear and everything for all the staff, and, and so that number, that the low time, is, whatever that is, translates though into the good times, so when you see, holy buckets, we got a whole bunch of money, you know, in our pockets, so we go and spend it all, oh, and then not, oh, jeez, we've got some bad times, so those numbers, the high times and low times do correlate with each other, and we need to know what that bottom number is, and how much of that high number is really dedicated to the, the low number, you know, set aside, and do you understand, Vicky and commissioners, what I'm saying, and Stacy?
Without doing, you know, we'll have to look at it, but ten percent, I, I'd hate to go much below ten percent.
Yeah, and I think then it can be a. And I think then it can be a, a philosophical position of the, or, you know, since that take, boards usually have that number, and whether they're willing to, um, for example, school districts, Brookings had a number, and they weren't going to go below that, because they didn't want to borrow money. But some school districts don't have a problem do that during the summer.
Well, and I, I think that's the reason that we started this, this graph process, so that it's easy for the public and the commissioners to understand exactly where we are on a month-by-month basis. And that's the reason we started this. And that's what our staff keeps a close eye on.
Yeah.
And I, I think it's a good idea to continue to give these to us in our packets, so that we can keep an eye on it.
Yeah.
And, and I don't, you know, we don't, I don't think we have to go into panic mode here. We're fine, and we will continue to be fine. We're, we're frugal, and, um, you know, we, I think it's okay. We just need to keep an eye on our charts. And our staff will keep an eye on all this.
Well, I think it's a good conversation, because if you look at 2014, we were at 39, and now we're at 24, so that's 15 percent lower. And if you go down to 2014 September, and we're at 17, you subtract 50 off of that, we're down to 2.
Yeah.
And, and that's now, is that something that we need to start preparing for, May, June, and July? Rather than saying, oh, all of a sudden, we're down to 2 percent of, of here, we're in, in trouble, I guess. And, and I guess what I'm hearing, what you're saying is, is we're spending a little sooner than we normally do.
Right.
Okay? So, um, that's probably okay, but I, I guess I, I do appreciate you bringing it up, because it's definitely something we need to keep an eye on, I think.
Yep.
And, uh, it sounds like we're just a little sooner than we have been in the past, so we'll probably catch up and won't be so severe. But, boy, if it, if it doesn't change, I mean, we could be down below 5 percent very easily in September.
That's where, if we look at it every month, which we do, you know, we'll keep on top of it, but just wanted you to know what it's looking like.
I, so, you guys are fine. I'd, I like to have a number when the public asks me where we're at. And I always knew that, and, and, well, at least on the school board. And then when you have all that money, and we, and especially with the budget process, we're talking the detention center or any other, uh, or all these lists that we have, five-year plan, whatever, um, sometimes it's, uh, good to know that number, because you realize you're not getting that done, because you can't set that money aside, because that money is needed for normal operations. So, and that's just me, but, uh, if you guys are comfortable with this process, that's fine. Oh, yeah, we're back to the original question. Yes, play it out.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, the DOT did send the, uh, notice to us that we could go ahead and advertise for bids for 213th Street. It happened probably a couple of weeks ago now. Um, we've been advertising, we advertised last week, we'll advertise this week, and then we're going to open the bids, um, on, my report all said 10. It's actually 3:00 PM on June 11th. You can make that, that change. That's what, what is in the, um, that is what has been published, along with the advertisement for bids. It's at 3:00 PM on June 11th, on, it's a Thursday. And then, once those are open, then we'll have that on, um, the next meeting agenda for you to approve. I also attached a, the, as part of my report, the draft, um, the long-range plan report. Commissioner Krogman had asked me to put something together at the last work session. It's in your packet. I also handed out hard copies, um, of that this morning, so that, um, as we go into our work session later this morning, that we'd have, uh, the hard copies to look at as well, so we can discuss that further then. I've also attached an annual calendar of events that I've been putting together. Um, got some information from the department heads. It's kind of a work in progress, but it's things that happen, um, maybe not every year, but, but, but most months, things that happen, things that need to get done in the statutes that, that, um, those, the statutes that are reflected, um, indicate why we do those things. I think last meeting, we talked about the 4H summer activities calendar. Sonya had passed that along to me, so that's included in my report. We have some website analytics, and you'd ask for that as well, some things that, um, what types of devices are being used to view our website, what pages are most often viewed, where are the people that are looking at our website, where are they from, and some other information is included. There's also the financial report from Growth Partnership is included, and then the handouts. I think maybe all of you had them, but just in case you didn't, I included the handouts from the eight-county meeting, uh, that were handed out. A couple of you weren't able to attend that, so in case you didn't have those, those were included in my report, in my report as well. Um, as we move in to, um, just some upcoming dates, next, it's next Thursday, we have the tabletop after-action review at the East Fire Station, that's at 8:30. Bob said we should probably go until, it might go until about noon or so that day. The bid opening again is at 3 o'clock, not at 10. I had to make that correction. The mayor's volunteer appreciation reception, you may have all received invitations to that individually, but that's on the 11th as well. Then as we move into budget hearings on the 15th and 16th, you know, in the past, you haven't heard, um, from the non-mandated entities, and you haven't had them come in and give presentations. They do send, each of them send, um, information about their request. And we're putting together, we've already started putting together that information into, um, a big booklet of information for each of you to have. Is that the policy that you want to continue to do? So I'll schedule departments, department heads, um, only? Is that the process that you want to continue to do?
I think it has worked in the past. I see no reason to do it any differently.
Okay. Um, and then there's a, there's a whole pile of stuff I put on each of your desks this morning. The First District, the STIP review, Information United Way, their annual report is out. I do have a copy of that in my office, if you'd like to see it. Banner just had an article in one of their most recent flyers, so we made that. June Dairy Month Dairy Fest, I think it's out at the SwifteL Center, is, um, this week. Some additional 4H information, there's kind of that longer spreadsheet of information. There was, um, the auditors groups had sent out a questionnaire, um, some questions about what each county is doing with, with regards to 4H. The counties that responded to that survey, um, one of the auditors, um, Kathy out in Harding County, actually compiled all of the information, put it into this nice spreadsheet form, so I'm sharing that with you folks. And then again, I handed out the long-range plan, so that we have that, you each have that as a hard copy for the work session, um, later this morning. And that is all I have, unless you have any other questions for me.
Any other questions for Stacy? I think we all got, uh, an invite for a conservation tour, which happened to fall on the budget. I notified Joan that I went, uh, because of the commission budget. Did you want to notify them as a group or just individually?
I don't-
You didn't get it?
I didn't get it, no.
Oh, well, forward that to you. I just said, the commission's having, maybe she, that's more than enough, but Joan got that, but, okay. I will forward it to you, though, to let her know.
Okay.
Don't let me forget. All right, Deputy State's Attorney, report.
Yeah, just a couple updates from me. Uh, I met with Commissioner Pierce and Sheriff Stanwick last week, and we discussed in detail the peddler ordinance, so I think there will be some substantial changes that we want to make, and I will hopefully have that for you for the next commission meeting. Um, we were kind of right on the cusp of the deadline last week, so I wasn't able to get it in this packet. But I think our first draft we had was really, uh, a bit more broad than we wanted, so I think we're going to condense it down quite a bit. Uh, additionally, we discussed the, the issue regarding stop signs, and I'm still doing some background research on that. I think we do need to just have a consensus or an understanding amongst those involved, highway superintendent, the sheriff, the commission, as to what the authority is for the board to put up stop signs or enact where stop signs should go. And apparently, we don't have the answer to that. So I am working on it, and we will have a solution. Uh, additionally, I think within the next month, either in the next meeting or the following, Stacy and I visited a little bit, but Todd Case, we'll schedule him to come to the meeting and just talk a little bit about the options for Board of adjustments, what some other counties in our area are doing. Um, so I would maybe ask Stacy to schedule that if possible. And, um, if there's any specific questions for Mr. Case while he's here, we can always move to go into executive session if need be, uh, but we'll plan to have him available if his schedule allows. And then just an update on the road projects. Um, on 34th Avenue, the closings are done. It was a big day for Abby. So, and a huge thank you to the Finance Office, to the Register of Deeds, the Equalization Office, they were immensely helpful, and they have a lot they have to do on their end as well. And I kind of just threw it at them, so a huge thank you to Vicky and Bob and Joyce. Uh, but everything now has gone out to the landowners. I'm now just, uh, waiting on the final policies from the title companies, and from the legal standpoint, I, I hate to say it, but knock on wood, we should be wrapping up with all of that. Uh, I, I do have a question that I need some feedback from the board on. I'm still working with Everest on the easement for the mining under the road with the culvert. And the one issue I guess they'd want some clarification from the board on is, um, one of the provisions that I had in the easement was that, should they sell, and a new owner would take over the land and the culvert, if they should keep it, that they would have to renegotiate with the county in terms of if we still wanted to continue the easement for that purpose. And Everest has some concerns with that, obviously, and so I'm wondering if I can just get some feedback from the board. I mean, my concern is always, we don't know what a new landowner would do. And I've expressed to Everest that, you know, should, and should they be interested in selling? I think if that new owner wanted to come visit with us, we'd be more than open to discussing, negotiating, whatever we need to do. Um, it's not that we're opposed to continuing what's currently being done, but we can't guarantee that if the property's sold. So I'm just looking for a little feedback from the board, because we're still discussing that issue.
Commission.
I, I don't think we want that easement to run into perpetuity. I think a, a new buyer needs to come back and talk to us. And I don't expect us to ever have any problems with Everest, because that's been there for a period of time, and there haven't been any problems. But things can change over the years, and there's always the possibility that they would sell those, those two parcels to different people, at which time we'd want that easement to end. I mean, there are all kinds of ramifications, and I think if they sell, they should come back in and, and talk to us, and we support that business enterprise and economic development in Brookings County, and we'd want to keep that there, but if there were issues that needed to be taken care of, it would give us an opportunity to do that.
Commissioners?
I agree. If we don't put it, otherwise, there's no end date.
Correct. If you left it in perpetuity, it would go on forever.
And so I, I don't think that's a good idea for us to do that, and I totally agree with Leanne on that. You know, if you, if you're on leased, or having an easement on leased property, there's always a contingency, if you're selling it, to be approved by, or granting the easement again, or having it re-upped and stuff. And I think they would be, um, be in their best interest, or who's ever buying it, to make the sale contingent upon an agreement with the county to continue the easement under the road. And they can come in, they can say, this is what we're doing. So we can also give our expectations of, of the use and what it's used for, and why, you know, why it's there. And so, um, no, I, I think we have to have that in there, that we have to do it that way.
Okay. I just wanted some consensus, so I appreciate that.
Going to be the devil's advocate a little bit, and of course, the contingency is more, but I'm sure their concern is that they got very valuable property and situation there that's hinging on somebody else. And, and the, the word has been used a couple times that, well, it's Everest, and it's okay. I'm wondering if our concerns shouldn't be, uh, written with Everest, and, and that, and that would be a starting point for the new owner to know what the concerns are to allow that easement. Because otherwise, you know, right now, we're just saying, well, Everest is great, but we don't know about the next people. And then when they come, we're, we'll decide whether we're going to give them that easement. Well, what's our problem? I mean, what is the concern with the easement? And I think that should be written.
Those issues are already addressed in, in the easement that, that Deputy State's Attorney Howard has, has prepared. And it talks about the safety issues on crossing the road and repairs to the road, and what happens if that, I don't want to call it that little tramway, whatever we're calling that, that runs under there, if it has to be rebuilt or enlarged or changed, all of those things are in there. But we can't, we can't predict what 34th Avenue is going to be like in 30 years. And we don't want to, I don't think we want to limit the county's rights as relates to our road and what we can and can't do forever.
Well, I, the perpetuity thing is a very good point, and that, I was wondering whether we should renew this on a regular basis, because I'm taking the side of Everest selling something a little bit, that you got to, that'd be a multimillion-dollar sale. I mean, it's huge. And you're, it's contingent on another body, taking a good look at somebody, if we have it written, super. How are we going to judge, if it's written and we're happy with it, um, what's wrong with the next people? We're going to look at them and see what kind of people they are? Um, and that's-
It isn't that what kind of people, Commissioner Weiss, that, it's more, the real issue with this, from my perspective, and maybe other people feel differently, is the safety issue with the traffic crossing 34th Avenue, when you don't have the best vision both directions. And there might be some things that if we renegotiated at easement 20 years from now, based on experience, that we might change some of those, those responsibilities or duties, or, or how we handle some of that. We just don't know how it's going to work long run, long term.
That's, goes back to the point of having an end date on a regular basis to review the easement. Because you, the, are we going to wait till the new owner comes? We have a safety issue, we're going to wait till the new owner before we renegotiate the easement? How long is these, current easement good for?
Forever, unless they sell.
Right now.
There's methods for termination, basically.
So, uh-
But I, but I think what you'd be asking for an end date would be more hardship on Everest than it would be if a sale. I think when a sale goes, it's going to be a big deal, and there'll be a lot of entities that will have to sign off on it. Financing, zoning, any of that type of stuff will have to, will have to be involved in the process, if they're going to change a use or any of that kind of thing. Um, I think if we put a deadline that we have to redo this all the time, it would hinder Everest from future plans or future mining or future use, and saying, okay, we can't plan out too far, because we've got to make sure we have this easement. If we keep it in here and saying, as long as you're doing what you're doing, you've got it, I think that'd be better. And if they decide to change or sell, I, I really don't think it's the type of hurdle that we're making it up to be, I really don't. Um, I think going to, a sale like this would be that big, there's going to be a lot of hurdles that they're going to have to jump over. It's not going to be a, a get this done in a month deal, it's going to get this done in a couple of years deal, uh, type of thing, because it can take that long for these types of, of, of projects, so.
The one question that your comment sparked, would, would your position be to still renegotiate upon sale? Or would you allow the easement to continue if it was used in the same exact fashion by a new owner? Think still renegotiate?
I think we want to renegotiate, because we might have developed some needs during that time period that we want to talk about. I, I just, this is such an odd, unique type easement, that, that I think we should reserve our rights to protect our road and our public if there are any issues.
I agree. And then it brings up, too, what happens if the city takes over this road, 20 years down the road, and this becomes in city limits? Um, I don't know how that would transfer, if that would consider a transfer, a sale, what would that work? And would that have to be renegotiated?
Well, the easement right now is between the county and Everest, so if we sold the property, we would have to look at it.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't sell, we would be annexed, and I do, I think Commissioner Krogman has a good point. We should put a provision in there regarding if, if the easement, excuse me, if the property would be, um, annexed by the city of Brookings, that the city of Brookings would have all of the county's rights as relates to that easement.
But currently, we have an easement that is good for, how long, did you say?
We do not have anything in place. Everest had an oral agreement with the township.
Oh, that's okay.
So there's nothing in writing right now.
That, I thought we, you said we had a written, okay.
We have a draft that Everest and I have been working on.
Now we're getting somewhere, okay. And I, and his, uh, Ryan's comments are very good, and, but the, the, once again, I go back, though, if you don't renew, Leanne, on your concerns, so let's say Everest sells it for 100 years, so 20 years from now, we have a concern, what, what are you going to do for 80 years? What, what are you going to do for 80 years?
The easement, and eventually we're going to see a copy of a final draft from the Deputy State's Attorney, says what Everest's duties and responsibilities are as relates to those safety issues. And they are going to be responsible for maintaining, unless something's changed in your negotiations, for maintaining the stop signs and, and controlling the traffic that goes back and forth across 34th Avenue.
Yeah, but you're concerned the, the new owner would have to meet the new requirements. Don't we want to make the old owner?
Well, they will be. The easement addresses all of our current concerns and who would be handling what.
Okay. You're missing my point, which is fine. It's so hypothetical, it's not worth spending any more time. But I'm just going to make one more attempt. If you had a concern and that with Everest running, but they could have it for another 80 years. So your concern is not going to be addressed till that 80 years is up, but that's fine.
And, and I understand your point. I have no problem on saying, we'll give a 10-year easement if that's what you're suggesting, and then renegotiate every 10 years. That just puts a burden on Everest, but.
But anyway, that's, I'm, yes.
Abby, in the agreement that's coming forth is, we don't know what the traffic's going to be like once 34th Avenue is completed. If there's safety issues arise with, with restriction there, is there provisions there that if they would have to widen the crossing?
Are you talking about us widening the road or them widening the culvert?
Well, it'd be their culvert. I mean, if, if need be, if there's safety concerns, if they'd have to extend the culvert, I should say.
I, I don't have it in front of me. I'd have to double check on that. Right now, we don't anticipate having to widen the road. So we don't envision that the culvert will be altered at this time. But there is a provision that says if the county were to widen the road in the future, we're responsible for reimbursing Everest for widening the culvert. So ultimately, I think we would probably be responsible for maintaining the safety and signage and whatever's necessary there. So, thank you. I just needed some feedback to continue my work on that.
Got more than you wanted.
Eventually, you'll have it documented. It's all subject to your approval. We're just trying to work out the terms. But Everest Attorney and I have been working on this and we hope to get that finalized. And then the last comment I was just going to make on 213th Street. You had the resolution before you today. Have been working with the landowners and with CDI to get the first stage of that done. We do have title work, so assuming in approximately a month, we'd be able to close on that property, wrap up the title issues. I know we're not getting a policy on that, but there were some issues that will need to be addressed. And then also, we'll have to do an agreement with BMU, which I'll have to work with Kerry on, but he's got some concerns on that and just some reimbursement of costs for work. So at some point, I will have that for you as well. That's it.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Any other questions? Ms. Howard, I was just wondering on the, that Boys and Girls Club thing came up and, and we head towards budget. Is teen court going to be influenced in any way with these new juvenile laws?
Significantly, yes. And I believe they're going to address that in their budget request to you. But basically, what the new bill says is as of July 1st, I am required now, it's mandatory, that I refer all misdemeanor, nonviolent, first-time offenders, subject to a few stipulations, to the teen court program. For the most part, that's what I've been doing for some misdemeanor offenses, but not across the board. Our office's policy have been there's some offenses that we felt would be better handled within the formal court system. And so now, that will not be the case. So I do anticipate the case load that they will be getting will increase significantly. And, you know, we're the biggest financial contributor to the teen court program. And I'm sure they'll address that in their budget request to you all. There is a provision, I don't know how it will shake out yet, in the juvenile justice bill, where the counties are supposed to get reimbursed a portion for every youth that's referred to diversion. And it's up to, I think, $250 per youth. However, we've been told through the different conferences I've been at, that that's subject to how much money is available and it'll probably be on a pro rata basis. So if there's, we only send a small fraction out of all the kids that go in the state. We're only getting our fraction of that money back. So it's hard to tell yet what we'll see with that kind of return. But it's anticipated there should be some. But their, their increase will start for sure as of July 1st.
Thank you. All right, hearing, no more questions for Ms. Howard. LeAnn.
On May 21st, I went to the tourism luncheon. And the gentleman from Pira that heads that program was here. It was a great event. There were a lot of people there. Swiftel received an award for what it's doing for tourism in Brookings County. And there was a slide presentation showing what is going on with some national, and particularly in our regional area, advertising video and social media stuff for, for the state of South Dakota. And Brookings County is in all of those items. We've got some various different things that show up in there. So it's just a, a, a great inducement to get people to come to Brookings County for various different things. And it wasn't just all West River. So that was, that was very nice. On, I went to the Falcon Plastics ribbon cutting ceremony in their chamber after 5:00 and saw that facility, again, a great economic development situation for Brookings County. Had the Swiftel advisory meeting. Again, there is some interest by Swiftel in, in wanting to move forward with the resource center. And, and we're working on talking about that. And as Abby indicated, we've been working on the peddler coordinates. That would all, be all I'd have.
Okay, thank you.
On May 20th, had a beta meeting. They have received a grant from Larson Foundation of $20,000, which will go towards a van purchase. They're also working on their budget request with the county. I think above their operating expense, they'll also be asking for a matching fund purchased towards another van or beta bus. It would be a 20% grant is what it would, 80-20 grant. Also, building discussion was, I brought forward. Years back, there was a location identified. There was some funding, but the location was not favorable to move forward. And there now, realistically, it's in three to five years. The only other, the need is now, but realistically, it's three or five years down the road. Brenda, the manager out there, she would like to see a effort made to open up a discussion with the city, the county, economic development and the state individual Bruce Lindholm and First District. Move forward on the grant process or something to move this forward. Bruce Lindholm from the state does a very good job on these grants. And if, if the need would arise or the opportunity would arise to have funding available to move forward, I guess. Oh, and I also was installed as a voting member at the last meeting. We did have the meeting on the 20th. We did not have a forum, so we had to meet the following week on the 27th. And I was put on as a voting member, so. Also, on the 29th of the month, this minimum maintenance sign and post office issue, I stopped out at the state office out here and talked with John Ritterhouse at the Brookings DOT. And he informed me the project was turned over to Matt Bray at the Watertown office. He is a new person from the state level that is in charge. On June 1st, I contacted Matt Bray about the sign and the issue. He had not received much information from the former engineer on this situation. His recommendation was to get with Banners, Rich Euclid, to go out, be a habit documented by Banners, to go out and cover up the existing signs and install temporary signs at the new locations until the sign crew comes back into the area. Mr. Euclid has, this morning, sent me an email regarding the signs. He was providing a map. And hopefully, if Dick has a sign guy that would have time, we can go out, cover these signs, establish the new ones, and inform the mail people in white that they can deliver the mail to these people. This has been ongoing for over a month. So I feel it needs to be handled and I said I would get on top of this. Also, Matt Bray from Watertown said that the sign companies come back one more time. They're making one more trip around the county. They'll do the county, the city, the small cities, and the townships. After this last maintenance crew comes through, that's basically all the maintenance crew's going to do. From then on, the county will be responsible for their signs. The cities will be responsible for theirs and the townships. So just a word, make sure if there's any concerns, to get a hold of Rich Euclid at Banners. He's establishing this list or the sign crew and move forward. And also Stacy, if you could get my cell on the website instead of my home number. Or both, yep, just add my cell. That's all I have. But if Dick, if that would work, if Rich, or if not, I can, I'll go out and do it. Because I have these, Oak Lake Township Supervisor contacted me last week and they've, they're having a meeting to address their end. So it'll be all done in their meeting, so.
Follow-up question, Larry. Are these on a minimum maintenance road? But these people live like 1,000 feet down the road and so the road's good for 1,000 feet or so, something like that?
The road is actually maintained past their house. And what will happen is the minimum maintenance sign has been put at the intersection. The minimum maintenance sign will be moved past their driveway.
Okay, so the reason I was going to ask if it's legal to have a minimum maintenance sign beginning in 1,000 feet or something like that? Because otherwise, people drive down and they get to the driveway, oh, minimum maintenance, I don't want to risk it. So they turn around and then come back. They could be stopped at the intersection, but if they pay any attention. Minimum maintenance beginning in 1,000 feet or 1,500, whatever. Is that considered a legal? And then the post, that takes care of the post office, takes care of the driving public. Is that possible?
Rich Euclid is addressing that now and in the warning sign down the road. Remember, on these townships, the townships are actually the ones that set forth these minimum maintenance signs. So they have to make determination. And some of the townships have removed the signs completely. Minimum maintenance, they've had them removed so these people can get their mail. But a certain one, they, they, they want to establish it past the, it's where the mailbox happens to be on the residence. There's discussion to move, well, just move the mailbox to the, it's around the corner. Well, if they move, then they got to have a new address and everything. So it's, it's.
Okay. It's just, you know, and townships, how, townships work. That was added to some of our minimum maintenance signs in Bangor. And just kind of law of the west, I guess. But in that it started at 1,000 feet and that kind of, but those signs have been down. In fact, they got stolen and then no outlet signs went up on both ends. And then, of course, they were removed and put back with minimum maintenance signs, which haven't been changed anything. So I just.
There's also some situations out there where the jurisdiction changed between townships. At one end of the road, it's minimum maintenance. And on the other end, the township didn't declare it minimum maintenance. So, I mean, that's.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that, Larry.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Mr. Miller. Well, you don't miss much, so that's okay to take a little time on.
You can give me yours because I have a whole bunch of stuff here, so.
Mr. Krogman. All right. On May 19th, I had a tour of Navida with Rick Eggbrecht and just drove around there. Take a look at how things are coming along there. On the 20th, I had three meetings back to back here. Ended up not being able to go to the ICAP one because they changed the location to Madison. So I would have had to miss the E911 in the morning, the BDC to get to the Madison one. So I took two out of the three is what I did. So anyway, had the E911 meeting. And we had voted to add another station. And then we had a little budgetary issue that came up and so we had to address that. And so we didn't have the funds right away to do it now. So we're going to have a little extra funds that we're going to have to come up with as the county here to help cover that there. But in the long run, we're getting some funds by accelerating this extra station. We're getting some funds, some saving some funds that will help us in the long run. So Rita from the city was there to clarify that for us. I'm not sure how clear it is yet, but we're, they'll make it there. And if Commissioner Weisseth wants to add, he can add on to that too. And then I had the BDC meeting at noon. The major discussion there was moving the BDC offices. And so they have taken a vote and decided that BDC will be moving out to Innovation Campus out there at the Growth Partnerships area. And there was a couple of other options that they had talked about. It was narrowed down to two, but ultimately, the board voted to move it out to Innovation Campus out there and to the, the building out there. So which I think I, I voted for. I thought it's a place, it'd be a good place out there. It's a beautiful building. I think it'll provide a great opportunity out there. There's room out there for their entrepreneurship program and also education campus out there. So the Growth Partnership stepped up and made things affordable and that was a good thing too. So I think it's a good move, but that was the major discussion there at the BDC. 21st, went to the Falcon Plastics ribbon cutting and grand opening there. A great facility for a great company that's been very good to Brookings. And, and they also said they were very good to them. And so I think it's a great partnership and a great thing because they provide a lot of, a lot of economic development, a lot of jobs, a lot of stability. And just, and it's great that we can help local manufacturing companies to continue to expand and create jobs and create product and that kind of stuff. So it's a very, very great business and a great, it's great to see how they started and where they came from and generational. So awesome day there. So I congratulate Falcon Plastics. On the 28th, we had a hospital board meeting. We had the discussion and Sheriff Stanwick, I'll tell you kind of here. I'm just going to tell you what, we had a discussion with the, you know, we had a city councillor there, Dan Hanson was there. And we brought up, you know, the safe room and the combination of them asking for investment, you know, and, and stuff. And again, I'm kind of paraphrasing. I don't want to, you know, quote there. But basically, the hospital wants to be part of the discussion. They know they need to be part of the discussion. They're, they're an important part of it. Of the mental health issues that we have going on through our state, through our, you know, for our community, our county, and frankly, nationwide. And so, but they have in their building, new building facilities, no plans to have a safe room. And they're not going to change that. Now, there's possibility, Councillor Hanson brought it up about renovating another area. And it kind of came down to this, it's not just about the cost of having it, it's the cost of maintaining it. And, and what he had kind of said, the cost for him to staff that, the training that goes involved to handle the, the type of patients that we're talking about. And the cost year after year after year would greatly outweigh what we're investing in the hospital. and the cost year after year after year would greatly outweigh what we're investing in the hospital. That they just can't afford to put new staff or increased level of training staff and that many to a potential of no reimbursement or not. And the question came up as, well, don't you bill them? Don't, don't they get billed? Don't you get reimbursed? And it's kind of like, yes, but they're not sure that's, that's gonna come through. They have a certain amount of, you know, charity that they have to write off. And every month that they do, and a lot during the year. And, and basically, I think it's, what they had said, that it's, it's not the upfront cost, it's the cost continuing down the road that, that they're concerned with. And so he said, we want to be in this discussion, but this discussion has to be bigger than just a safe room in the hospital. It has to be about mental health in, in Brookings County and frankly, the state. It has to, has to be involved. And they want to be part of the discussion, but right now, he, they just didn't want us to tie the two together, stuff that the safe room goes with, with that. And that, that's what, you know, his discussion was. And I said, wow, bring it back, and we can obviously have that discussion and, and that kind of thing. But he knows it's a situation. We've, you know, gotten reports from different sheriffs, emails and stuff like that, from different sheriffs of how they're handling different counties. And each are different, and each have a different solution. And I think the best thing that can come out of this is if we can get the county, the city, the hospital, Eastern Behavioral Health, and try to figure out a way to work through a solution. It seems like the costs are too heavy to put on one entity. You know, county commission can't pay for it, city Brookings can't pay for it, Brookings Hospital can't pay. It just, it is, even if we all put together, I think the cost would be pretty there. So I think there's, we gotta figure out a way to, to start this discussion and see if there's a way that we can better help the people, you know, and need, basically. So again, long, long discussion there, but I think it's something we need to sit down with sometime and have a, whether we put a task force together or whatever. But I think there's a need, but I don't know if it's just as easy as a safe room right here type of situation.
Well, Mr. Krogman, I appreciate all the time you put in it because it's at the beginning of our 911 meeting, just when we were sitting around talking. Boy, Jeff Miller got all excited about this thing. And, and I agree, Leanne. And I'm just wondering, when you mean task force, you mean with all the council and commission? Or like you as a commissioner of the sheriff's department and Ryan? See if we can get this moved forward with the, the... What do you think?
No, and I, I think that's what we have to do. That's a start. I think we gotta, you know, we gotta, we gotta do something like that. We gotta talk about it. The other thing, too, is, is, you know, we're looking at regional facilities. And part of the problem is the longer they stay with us is because there's not beds open at other places. And so as a state, we have not places for, for people. And, and it's, I almost want to, you know, get in this task force, maybe get a legislator involved in the part two and saying, hey, you know, we're looking at regional systems here, jail systems. And do we really need to look at a regional or state mental health system and expanding that to allow for people, whether we have local areas for a week's stay, to help these, you know? I think it's a, it's almost gonna be big enough and spendy enough that the state may need to get involved or need to hear it or need to get that stuff started there, too. So I, I agree with you. I think we need to get something going and keep it going and keep it, because it's been a problem for a long time. And if we're gonna do something, we need to, we might as well not sit on our hands here. We might as well get active on it and stuff. But I don't know. I mean, I think all of the way other people are handling it, too, needs to be looked at. Is there a place that's handling it well? And what are they doing? And how are they funding it? And I think funding's gonna come down to it, and it always does. You know, it's always the money. And, and so I just, I think we need to get the state and looked into that, too. That they need to be aware of the problems that are happening, and it's not gonna stop. It's gonna continue to, to grow. And we need to be able to help mental health patients the best we can.
Mr. Chair, just a really quick comment. I don't know that it's so much a state problem as it is a regional because if you live in Yankton, you have the Human Services Center there that they utilize. If you live in Sioux Falls, you have a Vera Behavioral Health. If you live in Pennington, I believe they have a facility there. It's a smaller areas that have to utilize a hospital or, you know, whatever facility that's not specialized in that, that has these issues. So it's, I mean, and maybe it is the state that can help us, but it's more, in my view, I guess, a regional issue. And some other counties that have these inpatient facilities within their setting don't have that issue. We don't have an inpatient mental health facility in Brookings County.
And I totally agree with you there. But what I'm hoping for is that, you know, that the state would help potentially on a financially type of thing to be able to, you know, to say, look, we have an issue in these regions, and we are having a tough time handling and getting our hands around it. And maybe they won't. But, you know, I guess, I agree with you regionally. It's, it's gonna have to, something's gonna have to, to change there, to create more beds, to create more space, to create there, and that's expensive. And then also to, to man it.
Wow, what a subject. Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
The thing is, we have been paying for this, correct? In your facility. I mean, they all say they can't afford it. We are affording it. You know, I guess that frustrates me just a little bit for the hospital to say that they can't afford it because we've been paying for it forever through our sheriff's department. So, you know, I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration in this task force.
Although there are certain points, so you take them out of there and take them out there. And I think that's how...
You know, and I think we're missing probably two phases of this, too. Is I'm, I'm also looking at the first 24 hours or, or whatever to make sure that this person is stable and we know what's in their system. You know, I know long-term at the hospital seems like a, maybe a pipe dream at this time, but I'm just looking for that initial, take them up so they, that we know what's in their system and so that they're able to come to my facility. A lot of times, we, we pick these people up and we don't even know what's in their system. And they're not, we don't know if they're stable or if there's other medical issues and those types of things. So I'm looking at short-term and long-term down the road. But I think it's that first few hours of, of examining this person to make sure that this person is, is, is okay to come to jail.
Because that cost, you, you foot the bill for that nurse to come in and, and take care of this person, correct?
Absolutely, and then there's usually medication. There's medication issues, and we take them to the clinic or the emergency room or by ambulance or whatever because they haven't been medically really cleared prior to coming to jail. That's my biggest fear and expend, you know...
Don't they get medically cleared before they leave the hospital?
Lots of times, yeah. They'll, they'll sign off that they're medically cleared. But a lot of times, if the person is not cooperating real well, they've cleared them without really examining them also.
And there is a big difference between the needs for a mental health committal versus the needs for an alcohol and drug dependency committal.
Right, we have two issues, they're two different.
And I think that's, that's part of the discussion that needs to happen.
There's two different classifications.
Yeah.
With the mentally ill plus the chemical dependency.
Well, and I think, and I think Jason brought that up, too. You know, the longer term compared to the shorter, you know, drying out period, I guess. And then the longer term of holding them for two weeks until a bed opens up type of thing, too. So, I mean, I think there's a lot of that stuff that we just probably need to, you know, kind of figure that out and separate the two. So anyway, my report, I don't know what we can do about it. But if we want to, if we want to initiate an invitation to the city, to the hospital, to put together a, a task force or a committee to discuss it, you know? I certainly can, can sit on it since I'm on the behavioral health board and the hospital board. I don't know, you know, and the county commission, so I have a...
No, it's a big, it's a big task in a short period of time.
And I don't, and I don't think there's an easy answer. I don't think, I mean, I've come and talking to all entities, you know? Everybody wants to go a certain direction. I just don't know if it's easy. So no easy button for this one.
Commissioners, would you be interested in directing Stacy to set up a task force meeting and ask Stephanie and Steph, Leanne and Ryan to be our representatives in this task force along with Sheriff Stanwyck? Maybe Abby would like to be there considering the mental health side of it. So is there a consensus to move forward with that very... Okay. I have a couple questions. Sheriff, do some, the bigger counties like Pennington, Minnehaha, on the criminal side, do they have a safe, full-time safe room in like Minnehaha County Jail? I mean, is like a full-time, not a nurse? I mean, just, they just, they don't take, run them down to Vier or Sanford? They just keep them there? They got a full decked out in their detention center?
Well, I, I'm not sure what they have in their detention center. You know, Pennington County had issues years and years ago with, with chemical dependency and detox. And so that sheriff, Don Holloway, you know, created a separate entity of the county. And so the county runs their detoxification.
Oh, it's a detox facility.
Yeah, they have actually a facility. Sioux Falls actually has a facility, too. And they used to take out of county, but they don't take out of county detoxes anymore. So a lot of sheriffs doesn't like to take someone into protective custody, but we're under court ordered to do that. So then we just gotta provide space either in our isolation areas, you know, until the person is, is got the alcohol or whatever out of his system.
Okay, thank you. And Leanne and Ryan, I guess from my perspective, it's really two issues. And one is the dollars to start it, and then the structure that's set up to, well, maintain it or staff it, you know, what that will be. I guess that, that's the two issues, you know?
And I think those can be addressed, and, and maybe we don't need to look at the, the long-term, but this will be discussed by the group, a long-term holding facility. I think what the sheriff is saying and what I saw as my 22 years as chair of the Brookings Mental Health Board is that we need someplace safe for people while they have medical issues. And once they don't have a medical issue any longer, then maybe we go back to keeping them at the jail. Sorry, Sheriff.
No, I know.
But, but while people are having medical issues, they shouldn't be in our jail. They should be at our hospital. And, and I don't think that's too much to ask. And we understand that we will still have to pay for that.
Sure.
So it, it's just figuring out the details.
Yeah, okay.
Who should be all involved? Or who do you want me to invite to this task force meeting?
Our three, Mike Forgy from East Central.
Mike.
Jason Merkley and his...
And whoever the city would like to have on.
And then I guess I'd notify Jeff Wildin slash Jeff Miller. Anybody else, Marty, or anybody?
Well, just along with my office, probably my jail administrator, Bart Siewby. And Gabby Scott Time, I think Gabby would be a great asset to have on that.
Yeah, it'd be good to have Ms. Howard there, if, if that works for her, if she feels... Okay, all right. Thank, thanks, Ryan. Anything else, Ryan?
Nope.
That was enough. Funny how these things turn into work sometimes. Well, I want to pass, I went to RTI a couple weeks ago, and I keep, this has been in my folder. Very interesting company and, and you get a handle on the high degree of education that their employees have, and their mission is very high-tech, a good, good company. As well as I went to the Falcon, and what a great company and good people. And thanks, Ryan, for bringing all the bad news from 911. You're gonna face a, a pretty sizable request for more money. And I already were, informed Stacy to work it into the budget presentation. I think it's 125, and I think last year was 80. We're talking a sizable increase. I, I don't know how to describe it, what, other than the, the interpretation of the cash flow sheets will be different in the future. Is that a good way, Ryan? That would be the best I can describe it.
Basically, we thought we had some money in there for cash flow to be able just to go ahead and do this. But that money wasn't there. And so this workstation was planned for next year, which we would've had the money in at that time. But because we're moving it up a year, we don't have it and all of it. And so we're gonna have to supplement it there. But we are, again, saving some good money by doing it this year than it was the next year, so.
Why was it moved up?
Because there's an opportunity with the state, because they're redoing some networking that would allow us to add this, that would save us from wiring and redoing it next year. Probably 20, 20-some thousand dollars or something like that. From if we, we did it all now, it would save us and they could get it all done and get all lined up rather than them coming back and charging us extra to come back and do it later.
Yeah, I think that's a good description. I think we were gonna save money. We got all excited, and we were presented with the amount of money that we had available at this time to save this money, and let's do it now. And that money is not all available. Hopefully, after this year, it'll go back, because it was a decision by the 911. I guess Marty and Bob have been going to all the meetings while commissioners come and go out of there, is to lower the amount of cash on hand to a lower amount than, it was kind of creeping up a little bit. And that, to keep it at a minimum for the city and the county on their obligation. But you'll, you'll see the additional requests. So thanks for handling the bad news. And that's, next day, I went to the local emergency planning committee, which Bob had. We had Daktronics and their safety committee put it on, on a program about their concerns. And for an amateur like myself to be aware of how many people that are always looking out for not only their own company's safety, but the public's safety is a, is a remarkable thing. And these meetings are, are very good for that day that we hopefully never have to meet, that we're prepared. And that goes still. August 13th is the next tabletop exercise, so. And, and, oh, well, June 11th, we're gonna have the after-action report of previous exercise to see, tie up all those loose ends, right? That we talk and how we can plug those holes. And so we'll be all set to go take care of people. One question I have for the commission and also for Sheriff Stanwyck. I brought this up, and I guess I'm just looking for some direction. I've not talked to Mark Jornby, and I've not seen Joel Ripley. And have you been back out on that North 34th since? Now that, I see now they're, got the flag people up. And in fact, I was coming back from Watertown with my boat, and I saw the cars backed up all the way to the east. I said, well, I'm not taking that exit because they were backed up on the exit and backed up. And so I went to Sixth Street, which was a stupid mistake also because they were backed up there because of the five o'clock rush. But so now they got the flags. Have we been back out there to check traffic? That'd be my question for you and the question for commission. Do we want to just wait for Mark in that township? Or do we want to get, step out ahead of it? Or do we need to, I guess? That's... If we've been back out there to take the counts since that first time, now that the flags are up, the flag people and they're delaying traffic.
On, on 34th?
Yeah, no, on bypass. You know, 34th Avenue North, have we gone back out there now that the...
Not after that initial.
Okay, I'm just thinking that now is when people are gonna start really using it now that they know there's a... Because I do notice on Sixth Street, and maybe you people that live here in town, how many trucks are coming right through town now? Because they're avoiding that bypass. And I don't know what the rules are as far as city goes. Do you want to just wait for the township to make a request? Or do you want to step out ahead of it and... step out ahead of it and see that problem? Larry, you kind of know some of the players in that.
I know traffic's increased, I mean, all, all around Brookings, uh, there's concerns, uh, I, I think it'll help a lot when they op, open up like Dick said, out there on the Elkhorn Road and Twenty-Second Avenue South out there, seventy-seven, uh, they're done milling out there for right now, uh, that, that'll help also, but, uh, uh, there's still, uh, concerns over the north, that mile there.
That one mile.
I know they bladed it yesterday, so.
Well, we'll see how they, you know, uh, you visit with Mark on a regular basis, I run into him, but I haven't in the last month, so, you think we need to visit with him or not?
I can, I can talk to him.
Okay, well, I'd just like to take care of him before, you know, if we think there is a problem, we need to stay out ahead of it instead of making him, torture him to, um, that's all I have, so, okay, um, now work session, um, and for our media people, uh, we are going back into executive session for the same requirements, is that how we left that, and so we will, but there'll be no action after this executive session, so plan your day accordingly. For work session items, um, we actually didn't identify any and Stacy kind of put the bull by the horns, I guess, and put these on here and we have IT and the long-range planning that, uh, Ryan paired, uh, so how do you want to handle it, you want to just touch on IT or? Do you want to do executive session before work session or have the media here for our work session and they do report sometimes, Eric, don't you, once in a while, our work session? Oh, that's right, that worked very good, didn't it? Is that the wishes of the commission? So what we're proposing, Eric, and, and is that, uh, we're gonna go into executive session and then come back out, go out of executive session, no action, then we open the doors wide open and we're, just have a work session in there on IT and, uh, long-range planning, it's okay. So I'll take a motion to go into executive session for South Dakota certified law. Thank you, Stacy, did you hear that? Okay, and, uh, under three, four and five, Krogman? M- uh, Miller, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both saying aye, okay.